Regular meeting of the Indiana Township Board of Supervisors for nine, April twenty twenty five. Please stand where you'd like to be.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. And of course, item business is approval of the minutes of the March twelfth, twenty twenty five meeting. Everybody's had a chance to look at them. Are there any comments?
Am I promoting or approving the minutes?
Motion by Supervisor Jorgensen, second by Supervisor Hechtrek, to approve the minutes of the March twelfth, twenty twenty five meeting. Any discussion?
Just a quick comment, trying to track it down here. So, there was, there was in there about Julie Distefano made a comment, and then in the body of the paragraph refers to her as Julie Gladstone, Ms. Gladstone. So, I know Jeff is her husband. His last name's Gladstone. I don't know whether that's interchangeable for her. I don't know.
Where is that?
I think it was hidden online. I think it was just in the public comment section of it. It was on page two.
I couldn't hear it on the tape. I did look that up.
Yeah.
I just took the last page. So, she goes by.
I don't know.
Oh, yes.
I don't know if it matters.
Julie Distefano.
Yeah.
I can change that.
Yeah. I mean, they're not here. I don't know if it matters because I'm. To somebody who doesn't know them, maybe they would read it and think it's a typo.
I can change that.
What is it to be changed to?
Change to Gladstone, not Distefano.
Okay. I think she goes by her maiden name.
Yes.
Okay, amend your.
Still amended.
Okay, second amended.
No, second amended.
Okay, with the corrections just open, is there any other comments on the amendment?
I'm here.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is citizens forum. I noted that nobody signed up. Did somebody miss the opportunity to sign up for citizens forum this afternoon or this evening? Nobody that wants to address the board? Okay, thank you very much. Move on to development proposals.
Sorry, before you move through.
Yeah, just to be clear, that was, is that for items, that's for items on or off the agenda?
All items.
On and off. Okay, okay. Development proposals.
The first is the revisions to the PRD section of the Township's ordinance number three sixty eight. Those changes, as we discussed last month's meeting, were posted on our website for everyone's review. And I would ask that now you authorize the advertisement of a public hearing for June eleventh in advance of your June eleventh meeting at six P M. And we'll advertise that with the regular meeting to immediately follow. So, if we go beyond the. Immediate start date or start time will just be pushed back. If you're comfortable with it as it is now.
I will make a motion to advertise a public hearing for PRD section of the Township's ordinance number three sixty eight.
For June?
For June eleventh at six P M.
Second?
I'll second it with a question, why June instead of May?
For the review with Alingan County?
Oh, that's okay.
We won't have time to get it back. They have to have it for forty-five days.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion from Supervisor Newman, second. What was it? Sheriff?
Me.
Oh, okay. Second by Supervisor Jorgensen to approve publishing a public hearing for the eleventh of June at six o'clock pertaining to the possible changes to the current planning commission, or excuse me, to the current ordinance number three sixty eight. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Motion to carry the bill, pay the bills?
We, for reforms, is the, I'd like to have the engineer and code enforcement officer cover this.
Sure.
So, this evening, we have Gateway Engineers, Pat Cooper, is going to provide us with a presentation of the Frederick Farms PRD.
Hi, Pat Cooper and Alberto Arteen with Gateway. This is Grant Miller with Moronda Homes. We were before you several months ago regarding conditional use, an application for this project was granted, and we are here this evening seeking final approval. Planning Commission has recommended the project conditions on addressing all of the comments in Mr. Slagel's letter. We believe we have. We did meet with Mr. Slagel and Mr. Smith this afternoon to go over a few of the items. And I believe we are on the same page on whatever. Probably a thirty-two lot subdivision. It's the former Frederick Farm right on Saxonburg Boulevard. Turn that upside down. Saxonburg Boulevard is located bottom of the page here, the high tension power lines at the top.
We're gonna have it say, yeah, I'm sorry.
And it's just two cul-de-sacs, thirty-two lot plan. Topography is, is very conducive for residential development as opposed to most of the land that's available anymore. Won't be a tremendous amount of gray for a project this size. Anyway, it's pretty straightforward. Any questions you might have?
So, why don't we start out by showing to the supervisors those, I think either two or three areas that encroach into the buffer areas? If you could just highlight those or point those out. Alberto?
Up here.
And if you could also show them the location of the power and the right of way.
Yeah, totally.
Goes across there. So, there's a dead zone there. And what's on the other side of the power cables is the Manor Hartwoods plan that was constructed probably about thirty-eight years ago as part of that project. The, the right of way for the high tension power cables is what width?
One hundred feet.
So, there's a one hundred foot buffer in addition to the twenty foot buffer there. And the planning commission saw the one lot that encroached a little bit into the, that twenty yard as insignificant because of the additional buffer secured by the power cables. And there's one other area, I think it was toward the entrance, a little bit. Now, what the developer's done is to provide the township with a fifty foot. If I mispronounce, please correct me because I have too many plans in my head. But a fifty foot buffer along Saxonburg Boulevard there?
No, I think it's still the twenty-five foot buffer.
Yeah, but it's heavily planted.
Yeah. That was when we were at the planning commission, one of the, one of the residents across the street.
So, is twenty-five feet from the center line or the edge of the road?
From the right of way.
From the right of way.
Yeah, yeah, so there's more room there.
Right, so, and, and the right of way for Saxonburg Boulevard is how wide?
We went ahead and made it twenty-five feet. It kind of meanders through this area here. It was less than twenty-five feet. Here it got wider. And then it came down, but we provided that even for a twenty-five foot on our side.
So, in addition to the Saxonburg right of way, they have an additional twenty-five foot buffer that goes there. In addition, we requested that they provide us with site distance right, oh, site distance triangle, if you will, at the entrance road. Because Saxonburg is so heavily traveled, we wanted to make sure that, that we had the ability to make sure that there was nothing in the way. So, people could pull out safely in this particular subdivision. The other thing, if you could speak a little bit about why you have four detention basins and not one?
Yeah, so the D E P has changed the regulations. Plan this size would normally have one or two basins. And because of the requirements, they're trying to limit the amount of impervious area that flows to any one basin. So, we had to break this up, and we have four small basins. And we were gonna request a modification. Your ordinance requires sixteen thousand dollar fee per basin being one time paid. And we were asking if we could, that could be reduced to instead of sixty-four thousand, down to thirty-two thousand because these are small basins. It's not like we're dedicating four very large basins.
And Ted, what he just said is that when I originally did the calculation for the special purpose stormwater management fund fee probably about forty years ago, it was originally five thousand dollars. And again, this coupled in there with MS four and some of them. Well, actually, MS four wasn't back then. So, this was just part of your original stormwater management ordinance. Then MS four came along, and we recalculated based on the additional effort that the township has to put forth toward those basins. And we increased that fee from five thousand to sixteen thousand. And that was based on the old regulation from D E P relative to just retain the water and not going through all the additional things that D E P has now added over the past, I would say, probably eight years. Which the major one, well, one of them is the twenty-five percent required absorption back into the ground so that all the water just doesn't hop back into the stream. The second one is part of those two is, is the fact that, that they want to spread the discharge points out, which makes a lot of sense. But obviously, the developer's now constructing four basins instead of just one, like we did in Blue Run Road. So, I'm not saying that the calculation is not valid because I believe it is. But it was designed for, in this case, one basin. But I think that the request seems reasonable relative to that reduction considering the number that they have there. The only other thing that.
I just, I would, I would say that I think we'd have difficulty waiving that, given the way or that structure. That fee was to be per basin. I know that they're smaller, but I think that puts us in a predicament with future applications regardless of the size, and I don't want to have a problem. So, I would only caution to ask you to, whether the solicitor would suggest it.
I'm not, I'm not certain, kind of, if there's a mechanism, waive that fee. I, I just don't, I don't see it. And if you, if you think there is and you want a table and have your, somebody explain to you why you think you can, that's okay, but where I sit now, I'm telling you, I don't, I don't think legally they can do that.
Doesn't the M D C allow for modifications with?
Under, yeah, but not for, I don't know if there's one for a fee waiver. Again, happy to, again, I can tell you, as I'm sitting here now, my rep, I'm gonna say that I don't see, think you can do it. If you want a table and, you know, ask for an extension for all the timelines and come back and have somebody give their legal theory on why they think you can, then I can tell the board they have an option, but as of now, I don't think they do.
Were the four on the original? Land?
We've, we've designed it per this D E P.
So, what's already been approved?
Yes.
Tentative approved was for four.
Correct.
And why didn't you ask for the waiver back then?
Just didn't break up. These, these basins, some of them, I don't even think are classified as basins. They're, they're for D E P.
They're identified as, you understand, you know, Mr. Cooper?
Yeah.
I, I respect that. I understand that. I'm, you know, it says basin wording says the fee is required. Again, from where I sit, I don't think there's a, I, I just, you know, I don't think you waive. Again, I'm open minded. If, if there's something out there that someone can show me or explain, I'm willing to look at it. But, you know, if they're, if they ask me my opinion, I'm gonna say it's, you know, be discretionary anyway, and I don't think it would be legal for them to do it. But I'm, but if you get, if you want to table it, then, you know, somebody contact me if it's, it turns, that's up to you.
You prefer to move forward?
And I guess even beyond the, the legal aspect of it, which is a critical one, I would expect these requests to be made at the tentative approval. Just two other questions. I think we covered this in the tentative approval. But by the, the power lines, the two encroachments on the buffer areas, there's no building going in there, correct? It's just land. Okay. And then you said the entrance to the, off the Saxonburg is gonna be heavily vegetated?
Correct.
Can you outline what that means? Or what, what type of vegetation's gonna go there?
I'll let you know. So, we have the different types of trees. We have white eastern red buds, flowering dogwoods, shade master honey locusts, and then we have wildfire torpedoes, white pines, white oaks, and then shrubs. We have some green junipers, sea green junipers, and then some verbeta for, for, viburnums, viburnums.
Yes, sir.
So, yeah.
It's gonna be as heavily deficient as you came without things growing together in the first two years.
But there's only, there's only one ever growing in there, right?
Well, you have for.
White pines, how many white pines?
Yeah, the white pines, yeah.
How many of you can, that?
White pines, we have eighty white pines on the, on the plan, but some of them are up here also. Little assembly, I mean, you got three, six, nine, twelve white pines. A little cluster of three.
Based on that, there will be, as you were describing, a triangle for visibility if people go on.
And if you could also explain, while you're talking about trees, how many trees are you planting per lot?
Three trees per lot.
And that would be where, where?
So, we show, we show street trees along the front, and then each lot's gonna have two trees within the lot. But we have, we, we show street trees coming down every fifty feet all the way through the, through the development. And then in addition to that, each lot's gonna have two additional trees.
That, that's a development town. No owners can plant more.
Yeah, obviously. And then finally, I just want to tell the board is that I did meet with Mr. Cooper this afternoon along with your Public Works Superintendent because we wanted to make sure that these basins were configured and constructed in such a way that they could be easily maintained by your Public Works Department. Because these will be the property of the, or the operational maintenance of the Public Works Department. That's it.
The only other question I might have is that in the documents that we were presented, there was quite a list of things that needed to be accomplished. And you said something about, or something was said that you guys had met, and most of those have been accomplished? Or is, are all of those items still necessary?
All with the exception of third party approvals.
Okay.
Just one quick, oh, go ahead, Sarah.
Oh, I was just looking, so, a lot of times when we see these plans, we have a brief discussion about parking for school buses and the pull over for the mailboxes, clusters. Will there be an area for the cluster boxes?
Yeah, we, we show an area over here with the mailbox clusters.
Ah.
With the some spaces that we have a pull off area. You can't see on the subdivision plan, but here.
Okay.
We have a couple of spaces here, and then for the bull pull off, the bus pull off, we have a couple of spaces over here also.
Okay, because it, yeah, looks a little wider up there from ours. I just wanted, thank you.
And you're still providing access for the Rachel Carson Trail? Yes. Parts. I was just trying to locate that.
Yeah, we, we show it over here.
Okay, so up there, yeah. So, this, at the very top where it says Rachel Carson, that's a sanitary sewer that you've got easement to use?
Correct.
So, that's not the trail. So, the trail's on, I guess.
Yeah, it's, it's coming up with the, coming behind the landscaping through here, the first lot.
All right. Thank you.
The last thing, Fire Chief Rex is working with Hampton Shaler Water to locate. I think he's asking for three hydrants within the plan. So, they're working on that. He's waiting for a callback from Hampton Shaler's engineer. So, it's being worked out.
Yeah, right now, we show there's, there's an existing hydrant down along Saxonburg Boulevard, and then we showed two hydrants on the plan. So, if there's a third one he wants on the plan, we're good.
Couple of questions. I don't think we've seen any renderings of the, the type of blow-ins. Do we have any?
We had a pack through the tentative. They're the same as Hartwood Meadows, right?
Yeah. Hartwood Meadows right down the street.
Okay. And the, the cost, roughly the cost for those?
Six to seven hundred Ks of the outsales end up being.
Okay. And then what's your timeline as far as breaking ground, starting building, clearing, and so forth?
In B E S permit, in H O P, you're asked to come in probably a fall start. Yeah. If any worries.
Okay.
Anything further?
Can I get a motion?
Motion will prove final, what is it, the final Frederick Farms PRD?
Subject to?
Subject to the letters outlined dated April third from Indiania.
Specifically not granting a waiver of reduction of fees from sixty-four thousand dollars.
Specifically that.
And just to be clear, as a last condition, I didn't see, is it, and I apologize, is the, is the fire hydrant, the third fire hydrant requirement? It says, is that, I guess that's in the part, is that, it's in paragraph twenty-nine in your letter? And Jim was saying we had to get final approval from the fire marshal for high communication. So, that's fine. Okay, so just those two.
Second? Got a motion by Supervisor Jorgensen, second by Supervisor Newman to grant final approval to the Frederick Farms PRD with the exceptions stated in the letter and the declaration of the resumption in the fees. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Okay, now, can I get a motion to pay the bills?
Thank you.
I'll make the motion.
Second, your question by Supervisor Hechtrek, fourth, second by Supervisor Newman, pay the bills. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All bills in business?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you. Start with reports, volunteer fire companies?
I'd like to thank you, Ian, for showing up at the last association meeting and talking with everyone about the fire tax area.
Okay, anything further?
That's it.
Emergency medical services? We have written reports in our package.
Yes, you did. And the room downstairs is moving a little well. It's all dry well, ready for paint. And it looks much bigger now that it's finished, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. At, at some point, maybe after the next meeting, when it's pretty well done, can we take a look at it?
Absolutely, absolutely.
It'll be good to see.
Good.
Chief of Police?
All members given a copy of the report. Nothing further.
Thank you, Chief. Code Enforcement Officer?
The only thing I want to add is I got another zoning hearing board coming up for May seventh, eighth, zoning variance. That's all I have.
Thank you. Public Works?
Nothing further than that, Mayor.
Thank you. Engineer? I'm gonna keep passing this down. I know you can't start without the permit.
Thank you, Mayor. So, everybody's getting a company act engineer's report in Easter purple. So, let's start off with the developments. So, on the development proposals for the upcoming planning commission meeting on April twenty-third to twenty-five, we have the Con subdivision, which is basically a lot line revision, redistribution of property of, of three lots off of Indiania Road. We already talked about the Frederick Farms PRD there. So, on the courtyard, let's look at some of the plans that we have going on. So, the courtyard at Hidden Falls subdivision, that plan is a hundred percent built out. We are waiting for the developer to request that we take over that plan. I do have a scheduled meeting next week with the developer on some of the incidental items. And Jeff, your code enforcement officer, brought to my attention that there's a couple of other things he wanted me to look at, which we will take care of.
Yeah, I'd like to be at that meeting.
Perfect. And then Larry has also brought to my attention a couple of little things on the paving that we want to get resolved. We made sure that when, when we were taking over the road system, that the developer withheld cash in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars to take care of these incidents, incidental items. On the Hartwood Meadows.
Before we go back, Larry, did we work out with Fox Chapel Borough, the, so forth? How does that go this winter?
That's private.
Fox Chapel Borough is not gonna do it either.
Yes, they're not gonna do it. That's a privately.
It's private.
But once we take it over though, right?
We took over our portion. We don't do the Fox Chapel portion.
Okay. That's definitely some type of agreement.
It's a privately owned property.
Okay.
So, on the Hartwood Meadows Phase Four, I was out there today, and they are viciously putting in asphalt driveways all over the place. They took up my nice new road, and they put black lines all over it and things like that, but it's all good. I mean, it's, they're just scurrying around like a, to beat the band. They, they're at the sidewalk phase of the project. The, we did have some issues relative to the water authority Hampton Shaler coming in and cutting up one, one of the roads, which we stopped. And I was very thankful to have our police department at hand because it does give me a bigger stick. So, that worked out pretty good. On the Hartwood Meadows Phase Five project, the developers now requested to proceed with that. If the supervisors recall, that particular plan, both Phase Four and Five, were approved September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. They're just getting, getting going with the second phase. Because of some of the things that happened during Phase Four, the solicitor and I have revamped the developer's agreement to add two strategic items to your development agreement. One is having a mandatory utility meeting, which I want to talk a little bit about. And the second is, is putting in sleeves for all utility crossings. So, I don't have to worry about them coming back saying that my mole head is stuck halfway across the road, and there's rock here, and I can't do it, and, and all these other stuff that I, I get a hold of. So, we're gonna try to, to nip that in the bud. Now, and, and I just want to say this real quickly. Is it, and if you noticed in the Frederick Farms plans, if you have a copy of that, did you ever notice in any of these subdivision plans that we develop or that you're developing, there's a fifty foot right of way that goes down there? Did you notice that the property pins go up to that fifty foot and stop? Okay, that fifty foot right of way, as it's called, is exactly what it says. It's a right of way. It's for access only. Nothing about utilities. Utilities go into that fifty feet purely at the township's good graces. The other thing is, is that that fifty feet swatch that goes through there that nobody owns, that's your property. And, and if you go throughout the entire township, if, if there is a utility that's running along the edge of that road, they're there in your good graces. So, when a utility comes up to me, such as Hampton Water, and wants now to have a dedicated location, and I don't have a say about it, that's not gonna happen.
We could institute a right of way fee. You know there are municipal to do that, charge everybody equally.
That's true. So, along those lines, we have a meeting scheduled for next week to kind of lay down the law. Because if you look at your construction standards, there's a utility, a typical utility detail that says, okay, the water line's over here and the street line's over here according to D E P's regs. The electric line stays away from the, the water line because you don't want it cross, you know, crossing up with the, the metal lines. The gas line stays on the same side as, I mean, we do it for a reason. So, we're gonna have a little sit down with all the utilities so that what happened at Hartwood Meadows and, and, because the, the two, two biggest culprits that I have is the gas line people. They just randomly want to put it anywhere. And the electric line people, they just, it's just, they're just problem children. So, we're gonna have a discussion on the same. So, that's my two cents on that.
And before we go off of Hartwood, I believe at the last meeting, Chief, we had a question about some, some people speeding through there, contractors. You guys were gonna do some extra.
Yeah, the officer's been checking streets throughout the township. That was one of the areas on.
Have we noticed anything out of the ordinary or?
Not that I was told by the officer. We will, if it has not been up there yet, the one machine will get deployed. I have had check. It hasn't been up there yet, yeah. So, they'll get it up here in the next week, add a couple other locations. So, your street went on a list because we get a lot of calls for that sign to go in the summer of the neighborhoods.
Yeah, have you noticed, Chris, a difference or with the speed and so forth of some of the contractors?
No. Yes, some of them go through very quickly, not all. The worst ones seem to be the concrete trucks. They seem to be one of the fastest. The worst ones seem to be the concrete trucks, they seem to be one of the fastest.
Oh, jeez, possibly.
I, I would also say, as we have more people living on these new streets, if you're being fair, there were, there were several kids on electric bikes flying all over the place, we were just watching, waiting to see when they get hit. Because they, they were not, you know, following in traffic laws either, you know, just literally driving in front of vehicles. They were coming out in front of.
Kids were, need to have better parenting.
Sorry?
Need to have better parenting.
Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not saying that's a town, you know, that's responsibility of the police department in the township, but I'm just saying, right, the combination of these construction guys flying through with now we have a lot more kids in these, you know, the newer home offices.
So we're gonna, I guess, vulnerable, we're gonna keep vigilance up there, just keep eyes up there, especially looking for cement trucks, because that's, that's a problem. There, once they get gone, maybe a lot of them stops.
I know the officers have talked to construction workers on site advising them, so, you know, hopefully, uh, they'll all take care of it.
Okay, thinking.
And it, it varies widely, it depends on, like, the excavators, they're fantastic, right, they're just, they're just creep down the road. While the other trades, you know, some fly through, yeah, like seven o'clock, whatever, eight o'clock when they're done, they just wanna get out of there.
I'll make the phone call tomorrow.
Thank you.
So moving along to the Foxwood Trails, nothing really needed to report there. The Blue Run PRD, the solicitor and I have been working diligently on, uh, getting the, the developers agreement and all the associated materials put together for that. Uh, as, as I understand it right now, the bonds are being processed and the developers agreement is on the verge of being, uh, signed there. And of course, that incorporates all the new little, into your little things we put in the new development. Indian Trails, um, uh, all the permits are in place, again, nothing, I haven't heard anything yet on the degrading permit application. When I do, I'll let you know. The old Saxonburg School Site Plan, uh, the developer, I think, has agreed to put across the cross pipe. On the Harmony and Hearts Run, I believe the C, uh, the code enforcement officer has put together a follow-up letter there. Ottawa Hills, I desperately need to meet with Dan and Larry on that, as well as the MS Four. The ordinance, we've already talked about the PRD ordinance, which is gonna be advertised for public hearing on the Salt Shed. Uh, it's getting close to completion, we did do a final inspection, he does have that final punch list. The fence is in the process of being put up. And, uh, we're working with, uh, the Public Works Department, as well as the manager, on a feature article in the Sun Magazine or newspaper article. Whatever it is. On that, I do have the board's consideration later on in your agenda, estimate number five, the amount of fifty-nine thousand, six hundred seventy dollars. The zoning map, uh, as far as we're concerned, is complete, it's being reviewed by Jeff and Jackie as far as spelling errors because, as your manager pointed out to me today, as engineers can't spell. People's Natural Gas Road Opening, uh, they just completed the, um, the Bruno Drive gas line relocation. If you drive down that road, you'll see coal patch currently in there. Their, uh, asphalt contractor will be coming back, cutting that back and putting in the base repair. What we've done, and as we've done in the past, is you're, you're gonna see later on here that we put together the two thousand twenty-five paving project. Larry and I have come to the conclusion that we want more control over the final course of asphalt. So in the asphalt visit, that we'll be talking about in a minute, uh, we did put in a unit price item for the People's Natural Gas on Bruno Drive, as well as, um, Richland. And they will be reimbursing the township, uh, for those costs, uh, so that we can mill and overlay the areas that we want on that. So that's a nice cooperative effort to work on, thank you, Jim. Plus I have control, which, for what that's worth. On the Emerald Park Access Road, uh, we're starting the design on the, the, what I would consider to be Phase Three. Uh, if you didn't see it, there's a wonderful little article on the newspaper about your sidewalk project and the different phases that the manager, Larry, and I have been working on, um, there. And I believe they're gonna do another follow-up article when we do Phase Four, as soon as we can get the fishing pier put together. So I'm hoping that the not, notoriety will cause the grant agencies to, to move forward on that. The next thing is the final four there. We opened bids, uh, this afternoon, uh, Larry Smith, manager, myself, uh, on the four projects. I just wanna point out to the audiences is that, um, that the four projects that we opened up bids for this, this afternoon total, closely to a million dollars worth of infrastructure improvements for the township. Uh, the first of course is the, uh, the community center roof, roof replacement project, uh, which is gonna, uh, help, uh, cure some of those leaks. The second one is the two thousand twenty-five paving project, uh, which I believe in your pa- package, you, you have something like this? Okay. Uh, so that's for that. And again, keep in mind, is it about twenty-five thousand that is gonna be reimbursed by People's Natural Gas to you? When Larry and I put this spec together, all of these projects are set up with unit prices. So we can sit there and reduce the scope by twenty-five percent or increase it according to the project, uh, that's defined-tuned and of course with your, um, budget. And then the Shaw and Chip Project, and then finally the Guido Project, and that's it.
And, and, this is a perfect question for you or for the, um, manager. As you guys opened the bids today, I know we're not gonna probably tackle that till next meeting, but, um, are they in line with what you're expecting? Were they generally higher, lower, what was the, just the overall, pretty much in line?
Very much.
Okay.
I, I think, yeah, I think he expected them to be a little higher.
Yeah, I did.
So we're not gonna be here with any, you know, surprises based upon?
I wanted it to be lower than, I'll, I'll settle with the, with, with what we achieve.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I hope that, have you act on those later on, Jim?
Thank you. On the solicitor?
Oh, uh, we've already done a book.
Solicitor?
I have a report.
Manager?
Uh, I was invited to be a presenter, uh, by ALOM at the, uh, ALOM conference on municipal success stories. And I thought the program went very well. Time to talk about our joint transportation impact fee, our developers rec fee, our most recent environmental fund fee that we established, which piqued a lot of people's interest. So I, I enjoyed it, as well as we again received a citation from the county executive on receiving the banner community designation from ALOM, uh, and I was glad to receive that as well, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Parks and Rec. Supervisor, one?
One item, we're made aware of a situation, I guess it was Oakmont Water, um, had to enter into Isley Road. They left a pretty big hole there and they're going to address it shortly, as soon as they, you did, correct?
And take, and take care of that. As soon as they get the hot asphalt, we want that.
Okay. So the issue on Isley Road, we take care of as soon as it warms up, which should be sometime in July, August time for them.
Okay, and District Two, I have no report. District Three, Rosa Crowley?
Yep, thank you, thank you, Mayor. I'm just gonna add that I too attended the ALOM conference and, 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 and once again, thanks to, you know, certainly your leadership, Al, and, and Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and both the township, as well as ALOM, you know, kinda solidified us being named as a banner community since the program's inception. It's all about financial responsibility, maintaining the one of the lowest tax rates in Allegheny County. And, and then secondly, the, the, the educational fee for the conference i- is always vital and it's, it's great. I do, the, the, this was the most attended com- ALOM conference since COVID. I think over four hundred participants and elected officials getting together to, to kinda share their stories, if you will. But, uh, again, I'm very proud of this group, our group, and everybody in the group. Indiana Township is, is kind of sets the standard, not just for financial responsibility, but at the same time, how we conduct our business. I, I did attend a, a, a really good session, it was kind of the app, the solicitors, uh, section. It was about a ninety-minute, um, class forum of at least, I think there were five, maybe six solicitors throughout the county in which, you know, we had the opportunity to discuss, you know, how meetings should be run, when, what manner. And, and again, it, it just reemphasized that everything that this group does is, 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 is in a true position of leadership for many of the municipalities, township, boroughs, what have you in the county. So, uh, very happy to get those accolades, I think, uh, everybody in the room and on the court, uh, well, well deserved. So, uh, the ALOM conference, as we said, uh, once again, and, uh, certainly come call out Mayor Khan for, for his leadership and both the township, as well as ALOM for, for helping us be successful, uh, with that leadership. And that's all I have there.
Thank you. Supervisor Herick?
Uh, yes, I attended the Mill Road Fire Hall seventieth anniversary, uh, jubilee, which was wonderful. It was really nice to see those guys all kind of taking a minute to just celebrate and recognize each other. And that was very special. That's all I have for my part, but I did have a question, um, I had meant to follow up with, um, Lou Raymond about the project that we had approved for the, um, fundraising. Has there been any word on how that's going?
I don't, I don't have anything to update you on at this time with fundraising.
Okay. And I just knew that we had approved that for this spring, and so I just hadn't heard anything.
I will look into that and see if we can get an update.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Falls well, District Five, nothing to report?
Thank you.
That was a crosswalk coming. I didn't wanna have a non-report report. It's in, you know, it's in the hands of a higher power, including Fox Chapel Borough, so we're holding out, I'll bug them this month, but I just didn't wanna, you know, let people know, just.
Slow, steady pace. We'll just nail them in the end.
All right.
Do I even have a motion to accept the above reports? Those who approve the above mentioned reports? Second?
I'll second that.
Supervisor Dorgensen made the motion, seconded by Supervisor Newman to accept the foregoing reports. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Correspondents?
Yes, Mayor, we have two pieces, uh, from several, an environmental consultants for Olympus Energy LLC. They're the adjacent township notifications for, uh, Lilo Wellpad and Westier Township, and then, I say Ice? How you pronounce that, Wellpad and Westier Township? That's all we have for correspondence here.
Thank you. New business?
The first item, Mayor, is the possible approval of ordinance three ninety-eight, updating the non-uniform pension document for the changes per December twenty twenty-four meeting. Uh, all the ordinances that are on the agenda have been properly advertised, as well as posted on our website.
Right, need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance three ninety-eight, updating non-uniform pension document changes per December twenty twenty-four.
Second? Motion by Supervisor Newman, seconded by Supervisor Dorgensen, to approve the, uh, updating ordinance number three nine eight. Any conversation? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, Mayor, the next item is the possible approval of ordinance three ninety-nine, adopting the International Fire Code twenty twenty-four. This and the next three ordinances are updates, uh, that we wanted to have done in advance of completing our codification, our re-codification, so.
May I make the motion to update the ordinance of three ninety-nine, four hundred, being four hundred and one?
If I can, I, I think just those are ordinances, I'd, I'd rather you do a.
Do them individually?
Yes.
Well, then I will just go ahead and make a motion to adopt ordinance three ninety-nine.
Second? Motion by Supervisor Herick, seconded by Supervisor Dorgensen, to adopt, excuse me, to, you know, adopt the International Fire Code, uh, ordinance number three ninety-nine. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Next is the possible approval of ordinance four hundred, that's adopting the International Property Maintenance Code twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve ordinance four hundred?
Second?
Motion by Supervisor Dorgensen, seconded by Supervisor Herick, to adopt ordinance four hundred. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And the next, Mayor, is possible approval of ordinance four oh one, regulating son of the pornography, through the most interested, so, you know.
Uh, make a motion to approve ordinance four oh one?
Second?
Mayor?
Okay, we have a supervise, motion by Supervisor Dorgensen, seconded by Supervisor Herick, approving ordinance number four zero one. All in favor?
Aye.
And next is possible approval of ordinance four oh two, regulating timber harvesting.
Make a motion to approve ordinance four oh?
Second? Motion by Supervisor Newman, seconded by Supervisor Dorgensen, to approve ordinance four zero two. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I don't remember doing that many ordinances tonight, never. So, thank you all. Uh, next is the possible acceptance of the Sheikah Spring Commodity Bits, you should have a copy of that in your packet and ask for your approval of this.
I'll make the motion to approve the Sheikah Spring Commodity Bits.
Second?
Motion by Supervisor Herick, seconded by Supervisor Newman, to accept the Spring Commodity Bits. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Then the next, Mayor, is the possible award of the twenty twenty-five paving project to the lowest responsible bidder. You have a copy of the certified bid tab before you, and that low bidder was Shields Paving in the amount of six hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Motion to approve the, or reward the twenty twenty-five paving project to Shields. The amount of six twenty-five.
Six twenty-six.
Six twenty-six.
One seventy-five.
One seventy-five.
Could you make the motion or consider making the motion to the lowest responsible bidder? If you could? And give me a.
So you wanted to make the motion to the lowest responsible bidder identified as?
Not identified.
So you don't, I'm sorry, we're not prepared for you, are we not, sort of, a further analysis going on or something?
Um, never mind. Well, is, is, are they, I mean, you, we're rewarding the lowest responsible bidder, so.
If you could leave it that way, that'd be perfect.
No, no, you have to identify who it is and the amount.
Okay, that identified.
You're coming out.
We did, it's Shield Paving in that amount, so you have any reason to think that it's not that?
No.
Okay. You have a motion?
I will second the motion.
Supervisor Dorgensen made a motion, seconded by Supervisor Herick, to approve the twenty twenty-five paving, paving project to the lowest responsible bidder, Shields Paving. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Do we have, um, any timeline on that?
Sixty days to award. So you, you just, you just awarded?
We just awarded.
Exactly, wasn't this sort of, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought timeline, never.
When are they gonna start paying?
Oh, let me just open them up. I haven't even talked to anybody.
Okay.
Um, my guess is somewhere between now and, and.
Christmas.
Yeah.
It's too much to order.
Yeah. We have, we have to do our work in advance of payers helping in. You know, and, and they'll do a lot of storm, storm sores and upgrades. Base repair where it's necessary to. Uh, the next item, uh, we are gonna ask to, uh, not do the award on Town Hall Community Center Roof Project at this time. The engineer and I are gonna look into, uh, a number of issues on those bids before we ask for your approval.
We should table that.
Yes, I would ask that you table that.
Do the motion?
I think you should do one in this case.
Motion to table the award for the Town Hall Community Center Roof Project. Second.
Motion by Supervisor Jorgensen, seconded by Supervisor Newman to table the ordering of the Town Hall Community Center Roof Project. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Next is the possible award of the twenty twenty-five shot chip project, and that is to the low bidder Russell Standard in the amount of one hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
I'll make a motion to award the twenty twenty-five shot chip project to Russell Standard, the lowest bidder in the amount of one hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Newman, seconded by Supervisor Jorgensen to award the twenty twenty-five shot and chip project to Russell Standard for the amount. All opposed? Or, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the next item is the possible award of the guide rail project to the low bidder Green Acres Contracting in the amount of sixty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. It's worth noting the difference on those two bids of two hundred and fifty dollars between, uh, Pennline and Green Acres.
Okay. Motion?
Yeah, I can make a motion to award Guard Rail Project to lowest bidder Green Acres Contracting in the amount of sixty-five thousand, two hundred dollars.
Oh, second.
Motion by Supervisor Newman, seconded by Supervisor Headwick to award the Guard Rail Project to Green Acres in the amount of sixty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all. The next item, uh, the engineer covered is the possible approval estimate number five to Pampena Landscape and Construction for the Salt Chip in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
This is the last one, right?
No. There's still a number of punchless items that are being completed. But he is retaining enough for those items.
Yes. You have a motion?
Motion to approve estimate number five to Pampena Landscape. Second.
Motion by Supervisor Jorgensen, seconded by Supervisor Newman to approve estimate number five Pampena Landscape and Construction in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mayor, the last item I'd have for this evening is, uh, possible approval of the Blue Run Assignment and Assumptions Agreement. I sent a copy of that out to all of you yesterday. I have a cop, paper copy before you all, uh, for approval this evening. I'd ask for your approval. Uh, and this again, as we discussed in the past, is the change from the developer, Brad Pittsburgh, uh, that was from Canada to a local developer, Blue Run Development LLC, whose address is out of Raffin Woods, PA, very closely.
Make a motion to approve the rule one assignment.
I'll second that motion. Supervisor Norton Jorgensen made a motion to approve the Blue Run Assignment and Assumption Agreement, seconded by myself. All in favor?
Just a quick question. This is a contract between two private parties. This is just us. Would, would transfer, right?
Yeah, basically, as you view, there's, as you recall, there's approvals. All the approvals stay in place.
Yeah.
But we approve the subject that's in order to, for them, or for the, we can develop our agreements to others. They think for them to decide if they, they know or not. But again, it doesn't change anything.
Or the requirements on them. Basically, there is some responsibility for everything prior to approval.
Hang on. Any further questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Do you have?
That's right.
And with that, if you like to make a motion, whatever.
Motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn? Second.
Motion by Supervisor Jorgensen, seconded by Supervisor Newman to adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Meeting adjourned at seven fifty-seven?
Yeah, I can't get it on.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
What is thirty-five?
Enjoyed the nice weather down there.
Give me thirty seconds to.